I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pause for a moment of silence. Roll call?
State.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
Rechner.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Ister.
I need approval of the reports for the Police Department, Treasurer, Controller, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, Police, Development Authority, and the Plating Commission. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Any audience comment on any of the agenda items right now? Okay, uh, CDVG update? CDVG update? Anybody here from SRI? Hello there young lady, you have a report?
Yes. Um, late night shoppers' night was a huge success. We had a great turnout. Um, next year we're looking for some more places to put more people. We had that many people trying to sell things. We just, we were putting them in the bike shop. We had run, we ran out of places. So that was a really good thing that happened. Um, and now we're working towards New Year's Eve. We're trying to get our ticker tape top of our light bulb hooked up with Triangle Tech. They're trying to figure out how to do it. So, but other than that, we have everything else going on that. So that's, that's it. That's all that's going on right now.
Well, that's enough.
Yeah, that's enough.
And the weather held up for you?
It did. It was wonderful. Absolutely wonderful. You couldn't ask for better weather. Nope, haven't heard one complaint. The only thing we heard was the carriage rides didn't last long enough. Instead of two hours, they wanted it longer. We were like, really? We had it for two hours. How much work can you want? But next year we're gonna go six to 10. We are gonna do it longer. People wanted it more. So, we're gonna do that. But we're bringing people into the downtown because it was packed.
That's a good problem. That's a good problem.
Great. Yep, we're good.
Great job. Thank you very much. Yes, great job. Uh, what do we have, what should we develop authority update?
Um, no, it's, yeah, we auctions in January. There wasn't any in this one.
You'll be hearing about some auctions. We're talking about having some in January. We just don't know what we can do if it's two foot of snow and 12 degrees out. So, we'll, we'll see. We'll, we'll be announcing that after the holidays. Uh, unfinished business. Second meeting, the police pension wording. We talked about this, this is just housekeeping, uh, the 2014 compliance amendment to the city of Sunbury Police Pension Fund. Again, nothing's changing. It's just updating, uh, the legal issues. It's about the spouse's effective date. Yeah, pretty much defining spouse. Means a person married or participant at the time of the determination as evidenced by a marriage license valid in the laws of the place of selection. If I make a motion, we accept this? Do you have a second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Um, how about the first reading of the?
Okay. Uh, we have a ordinance to have our first reading of regarding, uh, the city of Sunbury's code office. And we're continuing to update and modernize the code enforcement ordinances. And in order to do so, we need to adopt the most current code books so that the code officers have what they need to work with. Um, to do that, this ordinance reads, whereas the city council, the city of Sunbury continues to update and modernize the code enforcement ordinances. And whereas the city council recognizes that it is best, it is in the best interest of the city to adopt the following 2008, 2009, and 2012 codes. These will deal with the 2008 National Electrical Code, 2009 International Green Construction Code, 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, 2009 International Residential Code, 2009 International Building Code, 2009 International Fire Code, 2009 International Plumbing Code, 2009 International Fuel Gas Code, 2009 International Existing Building Code, 2009 International Plantical Code, 2009 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the 2012 International Property Ordinance Code. Uh, these books are updated periodically, and this would bring the code office completely up to date so that they can, um, like I said, continue to operate as we did. Therefore, this ordinance would change, um, I guess, should I, I'll go ahead and read through the sections really fast. Um, it'll change the following sections of the code book. That would be chapter, uh, section 16 dash 2. It would be chapter, section 82 slash 2, chapter, section 88 slash 2, chapter, section 110 slash 2, chapter, section 127 slash 2. And it would also adopt, uh, chapters, section 130 dash 1 changes. Finally, let me just take note that, uh, once we have our final reading of this, the passage would take place or take effect within 10 days. Um, and again, let's make it the code office, um, the most updated code books to work with. All right, it's good enough. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, you're absolutely, no, I have the updated version. This was a revision to that. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
I'm second guessing this now. It's 2009 or 2012.
2009.
2009. There were a few that are 2009 and one that's 2012. So I'm just having Mike clarify because I want to make sure we went the first reading proper to the right books. Um, because there are so many books that the code office works with, um, obviously there are competitors to work with there too. But, um, so I would present this ordinance then for first reading.
Let me be clear. This, we're not adopting anything other than what the laws are. We have to update as far as the years are going through. We're not creating any new ordinances. Correct?
If I, if I may just add, um, basically what this is, a revision to Pennsylvania Act 45, which basically builds or, uh, works around the building construction codes of Pennsylvania. Um, there are some additions to the, the code, which was the green energy and the pools and spas. Um, we just wanted to revise some of our wording. So, the city of Sunbury was up to code with the state of Pennsylvania and their code per books.
Do you have a motion to accept?
Second.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Stormwater waiver, Sunoco, Rick?
Uh, Mike has that. This is just a formality. Early, earlier on, uh, we did this probably in the spring of last year with Burger King and Sunoco both. But since it went on so long, we figured we'd just redo it again for Sunoco. Actually, they're making, uh, they're gonna have less, uh, impervious ground. They're putting a couple of, of...
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens in and one retention pond that wasn't there before. So there's, it's a handle for water runoff and, uh, municipal authorities up looking over the project and they're more than satisfied with what Sunoco are doing. So it's just a formality that, uh, I make this motion that, uh, we give them a waiver on the stormwater due to they're not increasing anything in the building. They're not, uh, anything, they're not making any, any changes other than improvements to the ground. They're making it, making it more, uh, more areas to collect more.
Clarification?
Yes.
This does not exempt them from compliance with the, you know, the road and city control requirements of the Northumberland County Conservation District or any other state requirements. It only exempts them from filing a stormwater control plan. And we have a memorandum of understanding with the Northumberland County Conservation District where they review when they report to us, like, or view the A and S climate requirements. So, uh, I do support the, uh, when I bring my...
Do you look over all this?
And we're, we're at the point now where, uh, they're getting ready to continue forward with their project, so.
I have a question. Uh, in that you said about having a, a pond. Is that pond gonna have water at all time or is it not really?
Well, basically what it is, it's going to, it's going to be, correct me on this, Tom Roger. They're going to go down and they're going to fill it up so far with stone, almost make like a French drain out of it. And it will, it will hold water rather than, and let it seep naturally into the system rather than just have big runoffs into the street.
Okay, because what I was thinking of when you said about pond, about pond in the city of Sunbury, that's gonna also problems.
No, 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 no.
It's basically, it's basically the same thing as the rain garden, except I don't think the rain garden, it usually has some green, green area and some, I don't know what it's for.
I have, I have a question. If, if they're, you know they're gonna do that, then that means they already have a plan. So what are you actually waiving? What are you waiving? Just a fee or?
We already waived, we already waived it back in, we're both on, but we thought...
Well, I know that, but what I'm saying, they have a plan because you're sitting here telling us what they're gonna do. So obviously they have a plan. So what are you actually waiving?
Well, we're just, since they're just starting going forward now, I think we're just trying to be proactive and, 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 and be upfront with everybody as to what they're doing and what we're doing. We could have not done anything and that question about it made me kind of go.
I could add to that. Not waiving any requirements. They still have to fire a land development plan and a city engineer and as it, as the representative also will be representing Northumberland County Conservation District. That will all be reviewed. All this does is that exempts them from filing certain requirements of the stormwater management plan in the city. They still will be required to file a land development plan.
So is this that part? So is that, are they, uh, then not, is there a fee or something that would have been charged if they're?
The, the process to file a, a stormwater management plan is a more cumbersome type activity and duplicates a lot of the activities they'll be doing in the land development plan application anyway.
So we're eliminating duplication?
So we're elim, we're eliminating duplication of activities in there and we'll still be getting the same end effect of review and approval.
I'm sure it has to all speed up.
When city cap, when client commission, the city considers approval of the land development plan, they'll be reflecting on my report and the report of the municipal for the Sunbury. And any reports submitted by Northumberland County Conservation District considering the approval, entire plan including it.
Thank you.
So, so not, our, our stormwater management ordinance is very old.
And we were going to adopt the state, but they haven't?
Well, we're going to adopt, we're waiting for the county. The state requires the counties to adopt when they're working on it. And then after the county adopts a new stormwater management plan, then we have six months either do our own or to adopt theirs or to adopt theirs with our own amendments. And that's, that's still in flux yet.
Are you looking for a motion, David?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Uh, non-uniform pension checklist, John?
Um, our non-uniform pension, uh, is with PMRS, uh, which is a state, uh, the Internal Revenue Service has some requirements that we have to, um, fill out form and, and give some, uh... So we have to do this annually. Uh, it was to be filed, uh, it needs to be filed by, uh, April. And unfortunately, the one we filed was not filed correctly. So, we're doing it over. Uh, two things that we, uh, have to talk about. Number one, part-time employees that up to this point have not been included. Uh, we got to tell them again whether we want to include or exclude part-time employees. Um, we'd also have to decide whether, uh, the, uh, any workers' compensation that they're paid should also be calculated for the, for the, for the pension benefit. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, those, those are the two things I think that we have to, uh, to talk about tonight. In the past, uh, part-time employees have not been eligible. I would suggest we keep that the same. And, uh, in the past, we have not included workers' compensation, uh, as, uh, figuring in, um, for their pension calculations. I would, uh, recommend that we consider those the same and that we do not change them. Then the mayor would have to sign it and we'll send it back to, uh, to the state.
Also, John, on the third page, where it says the percentages?
Yeah.
That's not correct either.
Do you have municipal members and the retirement?
Yeah, firstly, uh, when it was done the first time around, it was split one-third, one-third, one-third. You go up to the top pair, uh, about fifth line down, where it says, uh, less than 95%?
Right. Well, in that case, it should all be, uh, put to the municipal account. But I don't have the, what, I don't have the information where the funding level is. Obviously, if the funding level is, if we are less than 95% funded, then it all has to go to the, to the municipal account.
Why do you explain what, what we're doing here?
Uh, if there's excess interest, okay? The interest is, uh, on, a municipal pension works differently than a lot of pensions. A municipal pension, you, the taxpayer, have an obligation to the city employees to pay them a guaranteed lifetime income. The cit, the employee contributes a portion of their, uh, check each, each pay period toward that. And you, the taxpayer, make up the difference. The actuary calculates an estimated rate of interest. If the city can earn more interest than what is estimated, then this directs where the excess interest should go. I can tell you the last few years that doesn't happen because generally pensions are calculating interest based on six or six and a half percent. And I don't know about any of you folks, but the city has not been successful in exceeding six or six and a half percent over the last few years on the interest that we've earned from PMRS. So it's, at this point, pretty much a moot point. But if interest rates go back up, which most of us expect they eventually will, then it could be, uh, it could be, uh, a consideration. So, what that says is if our actuary estimates that we're gonna earn six percent and all of our figures are based on six percent and we earn seven, we have one percent of excess interest, and this is saying, how do we divide that up? The law now says that if we are not at least 95% funded, all of the money has to go to the city of Sunbury's account because we're behind on our promise to our, to our employees or retirees. If we are more than 95% funded, then it can be shared, okay? In this case, and for years, we have said, if we meet that funding target, we will share it. A third goes back to the taxpayer, a third goes to the current employees, and a third goes to retirees. And so that's what that, and as, as Jim has pointed out correctly, that, uh, the, uh, the act requires that if we are not at least 95% funded, it goes to the municipality. I do not believe, Jim, that this overrides that. If we are less than 95% funded, it still, 100% has to go back to the municipal.
And I think the, the non-uniform is still four thirty-five, four fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And here again, that's, that's the taxpayer's burden to pay.
Yeah.
That's why I think it should all go back to that account until it becomes solvent. And then you can start distributing from there. That's not gonna be today or more. It's obvious.
So you wanna change that to 100% to the municipal account?
Yes.
You're saying? And how about the section right underneath that as a second choice? We have to change that? Okay. Second set of choices, pick one A or B. It does not affect that.
I think that might be your choice, your employees' choice at retirement.
Okay. I, I think, I don't think we have to change that because if you read, it says, if the plan's funded status is 95% or more, of the most recently filed Act 205 actuary report, the excess interest will be allocated in accordance with the plan's contract. And such a municipality required to choose among the following. So that only applies if we're over 95%. I don't think we have to change that. We can just leave it the way it is. All that's saying is that the new rules, this is, the state's intent to try to help taxpayers manage the burden of pensions. So all it's saying is that if we're under 95%, it has to go to the, to the city's account. If we're over 95%, then it's split three, 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 three.
So you're saying that the arbitrage provisions don't exist for favorable conditions now?
Yeah.
They're trying to make it sound that we're doing something for the taxpayers, which won't happen for the next 20 years. The difference, the spread.
Well, first, yes, because there is no spread.
There is no spread.
There is no spread. So it's, it's an, like a lot of government activity, it's an exercise in futility. But it looks good on paper. We could, the people in Harrisburg can say, we did something to help you out.
They're doing nothing.
Yeah. It's taken years ago when there was a spread and there was still a heck of a deficit that taxpayers was responsible for paying.
When CDs you're paying 15% and you were, you were getting, you know, tax, tax returns at six.
Even back in 2005 and 2006, we were beating those numbers. But we haven't beaten those numbers since 2008, so.
Been that for a while.
So I make a motion that we, uh, that we, uh, make the changes that part-time employees continue to be ineligible and that, uh, workers' compensation payments shall not be included for, for, for pension computation.
And 100% to the?
100% to the municipal account. Everybody get that? Do you have a motion to accept? Or John made a motion. Do you have a second?
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Arbor approval, Rick?
Mike? On December 3rd, the hardwood's being met for two projects. The first one on the agenda is five more Second Street, which is basically the law of, uh, Joe Wees over here on North Second Street. Um, basically, their front porch is becoming a state of disrepair, decaying wood, the brick's starting to sink. Um, and they want to replace all of that with concrete, uh, make a concrete porch. Um, in the front, where the brick is currently, they're gonna stamp the brick, or stamp the concrete, make it look like brick. Um, they're gonna, gonna replace the wooden columns with aluminum columns to as much as originality as possible. And the wooden railing is gonna be replaced with aluminum railing to match the wrought iron railing that is currently in the front steps area.
Okay, so that's the first one. That's... Yeah. Five more Second Street. Uh, make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that, uh, the determination of the hardwood be accepted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Ister?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
The second one, Mike?
Yeah, the second one's at 41 more Fourth Street. It's basically the Cowell Insurance Agency across from the entrance to Hert and Sunoco. Basically, all he's requesting is to put a second solid room canopy over his front door that matches the, um, canopy to the door on the north side. So he wants a second canopy, or two canopies rather than this one. And they're both approved by.
I'll make that motion that we accept this also.
Do you have a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Resolution, open containment, New Year's Eve, Jim?
Yes, SRI's requesting the, uh, open containment for New Year's Eve, the Market Street to 1:00 PM.
AM.
Uh, AM, excuse me. On, uh, New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2014. Any questions? Fifty. Pardon? Fifty, how's it? Fifty. Well, starts in 14, goes to... I apologize once again.
Does that involve beverages that are bought in town and also beverages that people drink with it?
Believe it or not, I have a really simple way to bring stuff in. Sir, so.
More than you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Part-time hire, park recreation, Jim?
He wants the part-timer to, he moved on to another job and bring another part-time and replace the part-timer.
That's effective immediately?
Uh, this weekend, yeah. And he doesn't...
What? And this, like, person working at?
It was, uh, Carl, I spoke to you about it before.
Okay. Of the rain?
Yeah, the rain.
Now, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
I just was wondering, what do we pay them?
I think it's, Terry, can you pull that out?
It was, um, eight and a half to start.
Eight fifty.
And about how many hours do they work, Jim?
They'll probably, they'll be getting probably, uh, 16 hours a week.
The rain, the rain's at full speed right now. Do you have a second?
Not yet.
Second, Mike.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Dale, road closure, March 14th, when the sun will be out?
Yeah, over. Yeah, it's the, uh, the 5K run for kids committee, little special 5K run, it's something in like a couple of years now we've done, Terry?
No, this is their first one.
Okay, their first one. And they're just asking to have permission since we have to have two months in advance if we want to get it all done. So I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Chipman?
Question? What road would be closed?
I don't see any roads in here.
I didn't bring them out.
I have, it's kind of small, so bear with me.
Starts on North Fourth Street, goes up Schickelme to Brunt?
Yeah, and then comes down into Seven.
Where do you start?
I think, or just up.
Yeah. Basically, a big district or a big loop right around the Y. I'm curious.
Chipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
You know, it, I'm glad you brought it up because we, we are getting more and more of these all the time. It probably wouldn't be good if we mainly could sit down with all the different ones that have them and actually come up with our own systems. And when people come in and say, here's where we want you to have that, it seems like everybody does it different. And, and if we could come to the point where, yes, we'll approve yours because you've had it here for five years or something, but here's where we want you to run it. So at least we can get things set up and get enough people to block intersections. Because every time we have one of these, there's somewhere, somewhere, and it's not blocked. So, and maybe what we ought to do is require to get them all backed. Yeah, just that way it's not, just be a lot easier for our people.
I don't, couldn't be quite that easy because the one that's 43 July, Jim, that run, they, they planned it out, told us what they were gonna do. Uh, Riverwood didn't give permission, so at the last minute, Terry and Cheryl jumping through hoops to get the route approved. So I see what you're saying. It'd be nice, but some of the runners come in, like we just did that color run. Um, they went out, they started to run it at the high school, out to Hawes Avenue, down Market, on the Fifth, up to Second, down Second to Spruce, and then back to the hospital. Because they actually worked with us. They tried to hit their people off the, the main street as much as possible.
Well, but, but my point is, one of those has to be better than the rest or a combination of them.
One thing I learned, like, if it's a timed event or if it's not a timed event, the road course, you probably do a little bit more involved than I have done. I learned that from a couple that we've done so far. I see what you're saying. Make it say, here's what we'd like you to use.
And they don't all start at the same place.
That's the care.
Well, sometimes it's determined by whether they want a flat course. You know, the one I ran earlier this year was a flat course, you know, from the Y down Fourth Street to Schickelme. Moral drive all the way down around the pack, and then back, it's a flat course. But some like to have, put a couple of hills in it, so I don't have to work and sail all the way.
Yeah, like the color run, that, the reason why that, they had a high, but it wasn't a timed event like we wanted. So that's why it wasn't really an issue because...
What was nice about the Tottos route was it actually went down through, um, more of the residential area. So you had a lot of, um, community members out in their chairs rooting people on or on their porches decorated for it. It, it became more of a, uh, a whole community event. I, I really appreciated that. So, maybe a couple of different grounds.
It wouldn't be worth having the groups meet and discuss what the best for doing.
Especially if you have two or three, uh, the three of them had a problem at a certain intersection, maybe we, we need to say, okay, we need to stay away from that intersection wherever it may be or something. Something to think about. Um, approval paying voices. Uh, city has nineteen thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and fifty-nine cents in general fund, uh, invoices to pay and one thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-two cents in, uh, liquid fuels invoices to pay on the commotion and repair bills. Do you have a second?
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
John, tax is on ration?
Uh, we have, uh, six people who have applied. So three are deceased. One's on social security. Uh, one has a duplicate and one says there's no such person. So, uh, I make a motion.
There's such persons.
Five dollars and fifty cents, five fifty, sixty-five dollars, forty-three dollars. Five dollars and fifty cents, five fifty, sixty-five dollars, forty-three dollars. I make a motion that we approve the exemption of these six individuals.
Do you a second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Can I just want to take a minute and explain to the audience where we're at with the budget?
Sure. We have been working diligently to try to close the budget. We have a balanced budget that we passed two weeks ago with a six, with a fifty-eight single surplus. Unfortunately, that budget requires the layoff of two police officers. We are trying to salvage one of those positions, and we have been working. I deeply appreciate all the work that Terry Spake, our, our city clerk, has put into this, and Kevin Trup, our treasurer, we've had some meetings about it. We have made some progress. We have, for instance, been able to eliminate a copier lease and some things like that. Very honestly, we're down to nickels and dimes. This is a painstakingly slow, difficult process. We need to either raise hundreds, we need to, we have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that we need to raise to keep that officer on the average. That's about the average of, of what one police officer costs the city per year. We are maybe a third of the way there. We are certainly not close at this point, but we are continuing to work at it. There will probably be some layoffs of part-time people, but we are looking at every line item in the budget. There's one or two items that are basically construction projects. We're going to, we've, we're going to move those to the capital budget where we can borrow the money to, these are ten, fifteen thousand dollar projects, they're not huge projects, I hate to borrow money, but one way to move it out of the, of the operating budget is to move it to a capital budget and borrow the money and then pay it back over a year or two. So we are, we are looking at some of those things, but honestly, we do not have final budget numbers today. We are hoping to have, we will have another budget work session next Monday night at five o'clock in this room. We hope to have some pretty final numbers at that. If we can't close that budget, then we will end up, we will end up probably approving the existing budget with the, with the furlough of two officers. The, there is a possibility that we will not get this work done by next Monday night. At the budget meeting we had earlier, we have asked the city clerk if she would please advertise for an extension all the way to the twenty-ninth, which is the last Monday. It may go that long. We have a couple of items that we're working on. Hopefully that, they will come through. We do have the ability to raise taxes higher. I am opposed. This budget includes a two mil tax increase. I am opposed to any further tax increase. I think that we need to find ways to rein in spending, and we are working on that. So I pledge to you that we will continue to do our best to salvage that police officer